I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for a regular meeting on April 11th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Blackmer.
Here.
Barbo. Bona.
Here.
Harpen. Obasahan. Oleskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Six yeas, six present, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance and the pledge. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a motion for approval of the minutes of February 28th, 2023?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Six yeas, motion carries. Motion to amend, motion to approve the minutes of March 28th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I would also like to offer up an amendment. In the section set on the motion of Councilor Sapienza seconded by Councilor Obasahan, it was voted to postpone until, and it's printed as April 23rd, but it should be April 25th. So if somebody could make that motion to amend?
Move to amend.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now let's vote on the, any comments, any other comments on the minutes? A motion to approve the minutes as amended would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilor Oleskowitz, Councilor Sapienza. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Council Paper 12,251, Mayor's Communication Number 40, recommending the appointment of Robert Grandchamp to the North Adams.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Point of order?
Oh, right. I forgot. Yeah, I know. I started flipping. Go back to the actual agenda. Hearing of Visitors on Agenda Items. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Anyone wish to address us on the agenda items? Please go to the mic, give your name and address for the record. Two minutes.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinzy Street. I would like to speak at about this 12,256, about the National Grid. National Grid should be in compliance with the ordinance and show proof that the ordinance is quite comprehensive and the laws need to be enforced. The council therefore should hold a forum so that we can get National Grid to show compliance with this ordinance. And once you read this ordinance, I'm sure you're going to agree, and you haven't been following this ordinance. You just come in and say, yes, 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 and there's a lot more to it than that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Then we will move on to the council agenda. Council Paper 12,251, Mayor's Communication Number 40, recommending the appointment of Robert Grandchamp to the North Adams Airport Commission for a term to expire April 11th, 2026.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,252, Mayor's Communication Number 41, recommending the appointment of Dean Bullitt to the planning board to fill the unexpired term of Lynette Bond for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilor Oleskowitz, Councilor Wilkinson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,253, Mayor's Communication Number 42, recommending the appointment of Barbara Murray to the Housak Water Quality District for a term to expire April 8th, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilor Oleskowitz, Councilor Sapienza. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Did you just say Councilor Wilkinson? That was Councilor Oleskowitz.
I'm sorry. Did I say?
Only fourth or fourteenth time. We look exactly alike, I know.
It was, you had the right one. I'm not going to say anything anymore.
Okay. Just having some fun.
So, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Council Paper 10,426-3, Mayor's Communication Number 43, requesting the council adopt an order to increase the North Adams Retirement Board Cost of Living Adjustment Cola. Without objection, I will file the communication. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. As indicated in the paper, the retirement board has presented for the governing body to approve a COLA of 5%. The 3% is within the realm of the retirement board's jurisdiction, and because it's an additional 2%, we need to come back to the legislative body. Sean Flynn is here tonight along with Beverly Cooper. Sean is the administrator of the retirement board, and Bev Cooper is on the retirement board. And if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Sean just to give you a brief explanation, and then we can answer any questions that you may have.
Sure. I didn't think it needed much explanation, but okay. Mr. Flynn would like to speak? That would be great.
Good afternoon. So recently, a special act of legislature was passed allowing the COLA for retirees to go up to 5%. Normally speaking, it's been capped at law by, capped by law at 3%, but given the absolutely rampant inflation over the last year, special legislation went through. This will be a one-time increase to increase the COLA for eligible retirees from 3% on their first $13,000 up to 5% of their first $13,000, or an increase of a maximum of $260 per retiree. It would go a long way to helping out our most vulnerable retirees. The financial cost of the system is not massive. It's expected to cost about $625,000 over the life of the program. You know, so that might sound like a lot, but it is about slightly more than a single month's pension payment over the course of about 20 years. So in the grand scheme of things, it is not a very large increase to our unfunded liability. And like I said, it would go a long way to helping out our vulnerable retirees. If anyone has any questions, any concerns, feel free. Yes. Actually, I don't know how this works.
Councilor Bona, then Councilor Sapienza.
Through the chair. So to clarify, is of this increase, how much is coming out of the investments of the retirement fund versus the city, the city fund?
So ultimately, our unfunded liability is paid for, at least partly, by the city. So this would increase it. The $625,000 figure would be coming out of the appropriations. It would not be coming as a single lump sum. There are a few different payment options. The one that's been recommended by PARAC is to do a balloon payment of about $110,000, about 83% of which will be shouldered by the city. So that would be for fiscal year 2025. And then after that, there would be no additional payments because of the compounding nature of, you know, the assessments that would be rolled into it, basically. But that's not required. When PARAC actually finishes our actuarial evaluation, they'll go over in more detail some of the options. Another possibility would be for them to increase the, you know, appropriation percentage every year, but like I said, that hasn't been decided yet.
Councilor Sapienza.
Yeah, through the chair. On this increase, this 2% over what it normally is, is that primarily because of the inflationary rate that we're experiencing currently?
Yes.
Now, is this expected to continue in the future years, or will it go back to the 3%?
No. So this is only for fiscal year 2023. Going forward, unless there is additional legislation passed, which I haven't heard anything about yet, it'll go back to being capped at 3%.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I want to clarify a little bit. One, it's on the first $13,000 of pension payments.
Correct.
Employees that are employed now, that have been employed since 19, is it the 80s or early 90s? I forget. Pay 9% of their salary plus an additional 2% for anything over $30,000. So anybody employed after a certain date, which is somewhere a while ago, are actually funding, pretty much funding their own retirement. It's the, and we have a lot of retirees in the city who retired a long time ago, or are surviving spouses who are getting pretty minimal pension payments. So this $260, I think, makes a real difference.
Correct. There's less than, or sorry, there's about 35-ish retirees who are not currently even collecting the full $13,000. So this will go a long way to help a lot of people.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off there.
No, you're fine. Any other questions? Councilor Wilkinson.
If I could, through the chair of the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Oops, sorry.
This is going to kick into next year. Do you see any significant impact in next year's budget?
No, we'll make, well, certainly, this would be a fiscal year '21, and we're estimating that in the first year.
I would agree.
Fiscal year '25, right.
I was just wondering what your opinion is.
Yeah. I mean, in the first year, we're estimating it would be like a $91,000 impact, and then we would have the actuary and then have actuarial study and then have it spread out. I don't see this as a showstopper, and I think this is the right thing for us to do for our retirees.
I would agree. Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? So we will move on to the actual ordinance. Council Paper 12,000, I'm sorry, 10,426-3, An Order Granting a 5% Cost of Living Adjustment COLA Increase for the North Adams Retirement Board.
Move to, move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Bona.
Yes.
Oleskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, just point of order. It is a resolution, so I don't know for the record if you have to read it all. I'm not sure. That's your call, but I just don't want to have to have us redo this.
I can read it.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Ordered, whereas on November 16th, 2022, the governor signed Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022 into law, this act provides local retirement systems with a local option to increase the cost of living adjustment COLA for the fiscal 2023 year up to 5% on the base amount of, as specified pursuant to general law, Section 32,103, and, whereas, in order for a system to adopt a cost of living adjustment increase pursuant to this act, the retirement board must vote for the increased amount, and then it must also receive approval of the legislative body. And now therefore be it resolved that the North Adams City Council votes to accept Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022 to allow for the North Adams Retirement Board to increase the cost of living adjustment for fiscal 2023 from 3% to 5% of the first $13,000 in retiree pay. So we'll go back and start the roll call over, just in case.
Bona.
Yes.
Oleskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade.
Yes.
Wilkinson.
Yes.
And Blackmer.
Yes. Thank you. Council Paper 12,254, Communication Submitted by City Clerk Josh Valiers, Submitting His Resignation Effective May 5th. Communication, without objection, I'll file the communication and read it into the record. March 31st, 2023, Dear Honorable Counselors, please accept this letter as I am submitting as a formal notice that I will be resigning from my position as the North Adams City Clerk effective May 5th, 2023. This has been one of the most professionally satisfying times in my life, and I am grateful to the offices, boards, and individuals that have been here in support of this tremendous learning experience. Going forward, I do plan to remain involved in the city as a constituent, but in my pursuit of starting a family, I seek a better work-life balance. Thank you to everyone who put their trust and faith in me to hold this appointed position. I wish my successor well and will be open to providing the same level of support as all the former city clerks have given, had given me. Sincerely, Josh Valiers, City Clerk. Council Paper 12,255, Communication Submitted by President Blackmer, Presenting a Plan to Hire City Clerk. Dear Honorable City Council Members, given the resignation of the city clerk, I'll present the plan to move forward to hire a new city clerk. I would like to, we've already posted the position, there have been, I think, last time I checked my email, there were six resumes. The position is posted as, review of applications will begin on, I think, the 19th of April. So people, if qualified applicants come in after that, they're not cut off, and it'll give us an opportunity to get a handle on, hopefully finding someone with some clerk experience, maybe from another community or somewhere else. At this point, I, the search committee will start to, at its beginning, will consist of me, Counselor Shade, and Mike New Valley, the city's Community Development Office. He's a longtime city employee, works with that office, and is also a registrar. So I also may seek input from other city clerks, either in the area or retired from our city. But at this point, we will move forward, and I will keep everyone informed as the process moves on. Any questions, comments? I'm just tired that we have to do this again, but, Councilor Sapienza.
Yes. Regrettably, we're going to be losing Mr. Valiers. I want to thank him for his service over the past several months, and I wish him well in his new endeavors. Wish he weren't going, but you have to do what you have to do, and again, thank you very much for your service. It was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
He's got another meeting, so. Council Paper 12,256, A Petition From National Grid To Hold A Public Hearing For Two Poll Locations On Mass Ave. So I am going to set the public hearing for April 25th at 7:30 PM. The public hearing will be held right before our regularly scheduled city council meeting. At that time, I hope that Mr. Kerr will be here to discuss the plan. We've got the details of what he's looking for so we can prepare ahead of time. Anything else? Any comments or questions on that? Open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Anyone wishes to speak? Name and address for the record.
Lee Uktah, 20 Frederick Street, North Adams, Mass.
Go ahead.
So during your last council meeting, you rejected the mayor's proposal for a Naha Commissioner, Talen Cod. I actually sent an email to all of you saying how disappointed I was in that decision. We are without a quorum. We need an annual, an annual plan approved. We are close to a RAD conversion, and this is putting us in jeopardy. So I'm here to ask you to reconsider your motion to reappoint Colin to the Naha Commissioners, or North Adams Housing Commissioners. And in addition, I think that there was some miscommunication on our end about the meeting, or else we would have been present for that meeting. So I certainly understand that we weren't here, we couldn't speak on Colin's behalf at that time. Colin, regrettably, could not be here today, but he is the president for another youth organization that had a meeting tonight. So that is my, my request.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I live at 163 North Street here in the city. I want to talk about, a couple of meetings back where it was brought to the attention of the council and the mayor about the sidewalks and the people who use motorized vehicles to get around the city, and how it's really dangerous for them in certain areas of the city, where if they fall out of their chairs, it's going to be tough for them to get up, they might get hurt. But this also applies to people like myself who use a cane, because the reason I use a cane is because of balance problems. So I could be affected by those sidewalks as well, and it may take, I might get hurt, and it may take me a while to get up, or maybe hopefully get assistance. I know the mayor has mentioned it's going to take time and money, but I just want to bring forth the fact that people using canes in the city are in the same classification as those with those motorized vehicles. And secondly, I want to thank Mr. Valiers, the current city clerk, for his service. I'm really impressed with him. He's got good, good things about volunteering, helping out in the city, and I thank you, Mr. Valiers. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
No one else wishes to, oh, go ahead.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinzy Street. It's been reported that some of these counselors, in the past, have harassed a city clerk, and this casts a shadow on all of the counselors, because we don't know who they are.
Yes, we do. Sorry.
Excuse me.
Mr. Wilkinson, you're out of order.
I understand. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Where's the decorum?
I just called them out of order.
I just apologized, sir.
Anyway.
Please continue, Mr. Cardamino.
And these counselors should come forward and apologize. And if they don't want to do that, then once we found out who, once we find out who they are, and it's going to come out, we got to get them ousted from the council. And I will work diligently in that process. Thank you very much.
Mayor, do you want to give us your updates?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick things. The first is, I'd like to thank Leah, Leah for speaking tonight, and I hope that the council takes action on her request. The second thing in regards to sidewalks, we are working on a sidewalk plan. We're meeting with some engineers next week. It's going to be a slow but steady progress there, but we will be working on that area. And I believe it was Counselor Harpen who had asked for an update on the YMCA. We are still waiting for the structural engineer to come in with his recommendations. We're pushing for that hard, but right now, the pool still remains closed. But please know, especially the public, that we are hoping to have an action plan on that building very soon. But we are at the mercy of the engineer in this moment in time. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any liaison, liaison updates or counselors' concerns? Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Bona.
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. I understand that the new police station, is that fully operational as of tonight, or when is that supposed to be fully operational?
We will be fully operational on Wednesday, which is tomorrow. So our 7:30 shift will report to 21 North Holden Street.
Thank you.
Counselor Bona.
Yes. We heard from the audience tonight about our vote from last meeting, and, you know, I feel the same. After that meeting, while I did support Mr. Colin, it got me thinking that I should have done more at that time of saying, of speaking up to make us realize we were making a mistake that night. And it wasn't just specifically our vote on Mr. Colin, but we based a vote on a one-sided opinion we were hearing, and we rushed it. We should have minimally postponed it so that we could hear all sides. I think it was a first for us. I mean, in all the years that I've sat on this council, I've never heard that kind of ejection come forward on an appointee, so I think it might have thrown all of us off of how we were supposed to handle it. And of course, you know, you're hearing some residents and, you know, not to say they were not telling what, the truth, but they were telling how they were feeling, but we weren't, we never listened to the other side. But that also being said, you know, moving forward, we need to be consistent on what we're going to have allowed to be said in here. We allowed a fair amount of criticism that evening on a, an appointee, you know, and also someone who serves as city staff. And I'm not sure how we, you know, I know I talked to council president, and some rules have changed on what is allowed and isn't allowed now, so we just need to be consistent where we can't shut someone down who wants to criticize one person but allow it for another, so, so we need to be consistent with that. But I'm not sure what needs to be done for us to reconsider having Mr. Colin appointed, but I believe, I don't know if it has to come from the mayor again, or counselors who voted, opposed it, would need to come forward, but obviously, it's something the mayor would still need to want to have, and also Mr. Colin would still want to have. So that's just my say on that.
Clarification, it would have to be a, an opposing counselor to bring the paper forward, and the mayor?
And yes, it is still something the mayor would like to see happen.
Thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Oleskowitz? Don't deliberate much, this isn't on the agenda.
It's Wilkinson.
What did I call you? Did I do it again? I'm so sorry.
I know, we look so much alike.
I got up at 4:00 this morning. Sorry.
I know, so did I. Anyways, I have to agree 100% with Counselor Bona. I thought we made a rash decision. I don't know how you undo what we did. We made a vote with only hearing one side. Everybody is supposedly in America innocent until proven guilty, and all we heard was the negative stuff. Again, I don't know how it would be initiated, but I would be more than happy to reconsider.
Would anybody be interested in a special meeting?
Yep. I think we deserve it to the guy.
Do we want to hold a meeting? There's no school building committee meeting next week, is there?
No.
Do we want to hold it Tuesday at 6:00? Can anybody, everybody make it?
Yes.
Didn't you?
Yeah. I just said a general government meeting for 5:30 that night, but I haven't posted it yet, so I would be more than try to make a different arrangement.
Could you move your, okay.
I can, I could try to make a different arrangement for general government, like, therefore, I could be there.
Anyone else? Counselor Shade, does that work for you? So we'll call a special meeting for Tuesday, the 18th of April at 6:00, with the only agenda being an item that Counselor Wilkinson will bring the paper back.
I am?
Yeah. It has to be somebody who voted no.
Okay.
So.
Can you appoint people to do that?
Are, are you willing?
Are you willing? You're the one who brought it up.
Of course I'm willing. I mean, of course I'm. Of course I'm willing. Caught me by surprise.
So, if the mayor can redo, if the mayor can redo her paper with an introduction letter, as, with an introduction letter from Counselor Wilkinson asking to-
I will follow up, 'cause I'm not sure on the procedure, but I'll learn it by then.
Okay. So, we'll do that?
And also, if I could just have the, um, latitude, if I have another appointee, 'cause we do have one more position open for the housing authority, that we entertain that appointment as well.
Yes, Monday's a holiday, so we'll have to have the paper by tomorrow.
Thursday.
Well, Thursday, pushing it.
I mean, I may or may not.
Okay, so Thursday.
I just want to throw that out there, that if we could do that to get a full board, I'd like to do that.
Oh, great, okay. Counselor Oleskowitz?
I would just like to thank the members of the housing authority to come here tonight and support. And I would also like to thank my fellow counselors for finding a pathway to rectify this situation, 'cause it was, in my opinion, an unjust vote. We were, as Counselor Bona had stated, we were kind of blindsided and maybe we could have interjected and made a motion to postpone the meeting or whatever. But I just would like to extend my gratitude to my peers here that we will revisit this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have any other counselors' concerns? Correspondents, we have none. A motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Now, I was giving, I was giving that to Mr., Counselor Bona.
Opposed, motion carries. Good night, everyone.